... flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have a chance to look over the minutes from last meeting? So, any corrections, questions? May I make a motion to approve that presented?
Second.
Second in favor? Board of Public Works, information only. Communications, holiday strolls this Friday is somewhere first. Communicated. Maybe there's no problem jumping to public hearing right now, go to new business real quick, and then going back?
Nope, as long as you get a public hearing.
We will do that. Move ahead and jump to new business. You guys go ahead.
Sure. Eric Walsh, Tyler Coughlin, Baker Tilly. Somebody I just sit here to my hearing.
I can hear you better.
For the council, this is somewhat of a refresh. You may remember several months ago, I think most of you were here, we talked about the sewage utility and potential readjustment needs. Just to refresh to that, one of the largest customers is the leachate revenue you get from the landfill. I know, I believe Marcus is, you know, maybe off today, but I think you're all aware of that situation. Discussions back and forth with the landfill. Currently, leachate is not coming to the city. There's hopes or maybe potential that could restart in the future, but even when you were getting leachate revenue from the landfill, you needed some form of rate adjustment. Just to refresh from several months ago, when I was here, without any revenue being generated at all from the landfill, you need about a 48% rate adjustment. If you were getting what you're currently getting from the landfill, which, not currently, last year we're getting from the landfill, that would range somewhere from $100 to $160,000 range. You still were in the need of a 35% to 40% readjustment at that time, even with the landfill. What we suggested several months ago is with the unknown of the landfill, and currently you haven't got revenue from them for several months, adopting a phased-in readjustment over 18 months, about 15% each phase. And if the landfill, there is something to be worked out, you potentially do start getting leachate back from them. We estimate you'd be able to drop the last phase off. If the landfill doesn't come back online, you don't get a favorable agreement with them and start getting leachate again, you can keep all phases, all three phases in place. I know when you talk percentages, sometimes the numbers can get lost, but just to give you an idea, some numbers here. An average residential customer, and we're talking their sewer bill only, we're not affecting the water bill with these adjustments. Right now, that average customer sewer only would pay about $35 a month. That's fairly low comparatively to state average. State average for that same customer is about $50 a month, so you have pretty reasonable utility rates. Your water is pretty low too, actually. But Phase 1 would increase that customer's bill about $5 per month. Phase 1, we're suggesting, would be effective in January of '24. Then six months later, effective in July of '24, would be another increase. It'd be about a $6 increase to that same customer. And then the final phase would be January of '25, would be an additional $7. So you can see it's a step up, five, six, seven add-on. So over 18 months, that customer, or excuse me, over 12 months, that customer's bill would go from $35 a month to roughly $53 per month in three phases.
As for... How does that final figure compare to averages across us?
You'd be right above the state average for communities your size. We do a survey, actually Tyler's the one that does it, every about three years now of all the communities in Indiana that we work with. The last one we did was, I believe, 2021. So you'd be right above the average of '21, and it'd be 2025. So you'd probably actually be, by that time, we'll do another survey, you're probably able to pull up the average, to be honest, because everyone has upward pressure with inflation and everything going on right now. That's residential, so that's the vast majority of your customers. Again, about a $5, $6 increase in each of the phases. I don't want to say that's minimal. I mean, that is going to hit people's pocketbook, but we're trying to phase it in, so it's a little bit more palatable. And again, if we can get some revenue from the landfill, potentially you could shave off that last phase, possibly. But you'd be adopting them all at this time, and that would be future action. Your two largest customers on the Sewage Works is the school and Woodlawn Hospital. The school right now, obviously it fluctuates when students are in, students are not in. School pays around $3,300 a month for their sewer bill, the average dollar over 12 months. They'd be looking at the same percentage increase, but it's obviously much higher dollars because they're using a lot more. So they'd be in the $500 to $600 increase each of those phases. So it's about 10 times what the residential impact is, but the same percentage. Woodlawn would be in the $300 to $400 range. That's your second largest sewage customer. So again, same percentages, 15% each phase, higher dollar consequence, a much larger users. That's in terms of, you know, why the need. I don't want it to be that it's strictly because of the landfill revenue being lost. Obviously, you needed a rate adjustment anyway, as I said back several months ago. And I know Shana had to take a phone call. Your Sewage Works has been using cash the last several months. We've been saying, you know, you're going to have to take action sooner than later. I would say you're within the next probably six months of having to do something and not having much of an option. Your rates just aren't set at a level to support your operations and capital needs at this point. In terms of public action, introduction of the ordinance is required. Shana has advertisements. One must run in the newspaper. One has to be mailed to any outside-city sewer customer. She's got those all teed up, ready to go. And then, I believe it's the 26th, you have a public hearing set that evening. Anyone from the public can come, ask questions, make comments, et cetera. You cannot take rate action as a council until after that public hearing is complete.
December?
December. Any questions on the proposal?
For the timeframe, is it date-specific? Three days, four days' notice, or?
Has to be 10 days before your public hearing, then the newspaper and mailed.
Sometimes we adjust our meetings, and it's going to be December 26th. Have we talked about that already or not?
We didn't have.
I thought I was wondering, but 10 days is different than 30 days?
Yes, the advertisement, again, Shana can answer. She has it ready to go to the newspapers. I think you guys have some requirements, how early it has to be, et cetera. If the 26th is going to change, you're not going to have a forum. We would need to know that pretty soon, because that date will have to be published in that advertisement. I know, I will not be here on the 26th. And in the past, we moved that meeting earlier. Ryan, do you have any thoughts?
So we keep with, Tuesday, we could move it to the 19th. That would still give us the 10 days.
What's the newspaper a week-long time? It's a weekly time? So she should make that work?
Yeah, she has it ready to go, she can send it.
As far as she knows.
Anyone have an objection to the 19th?
I can do it here.
Okay, so let's set it for the 19th. Yep.
So Tyler, can you get Shana and get that changed made?
I think I was involved in one meeting with Republic. Were those negotiations broken down, or we're just not making any headway?
There was a meeting several weeks ago. The city has provided a couple of different proposals to Republic. They've came back with, like, counteroffer, maybe too hard of a word, but they've kind of changed the goalposts a few times, I would say. I think there's something that can get done there. I just, how hard does the city want to push at this point, I think, is the question. And as I said earlier, their counter is not too far different than what you were getting previously from them, so it doesn't necessarily change. They shaved 10%, 12% off the rate adjustment. It's not a hugely material impact. I guess I'll summarize this, there's no magic bullet to this. You're going to have to do something with the rates, even if Republic comes back, you're still having a fairly material increase. Shana?
Yes.
We've talked about changing the meeting to the 19th. We're still fine getting the advertisements and all that stuff, right?
Yes, as long as I can get passed to media to cooperate with me.
We haven't sent the outside customers out yet, right?
They're, no, we were going to get that out this week, so...
So we'll need to change that date.
I'll update those in 12 months.
So December 19th.
Do you have any questions? We'll be here on the 19th as well for questions and answers from the public. It'll be a fun one.
Yep, they always are.
Okay. Another new business is the amendment to the water tap fees. Do you have anything on that, Shana?
On which one? The water tap fees?
Yeah, water tap fees.
No, that was an approval from the Water Board. They made the adjustment, and it just needs to be, the ordinance just needs to be amended to reflect that change.
We jumped the public hearing, so we'll go back into the public hearing. And open that up on the amendment to Fulton County. Zone ordinance, subdivision ordinance, and zone map. Was Heather coming?
Heather is not, she is still out, so...
Kim's here.
Kim's here.
You have the floor.
Okay, so I'm just going to run through these. If you have questions, please feel free to ask. Our fees, schedules are going to change a little bit, how we do things. Our solar array is, we're under a farm moratorium right now, so we do not, we can't have a solar farm come to Fulton County until we, at the first of the year, will work with our plant commission board and start writing an ordinance for it. As that takes place, those fees will change for our solar arrays. We are doing, we are changing how we are doing the BZAs. Instead of having the applicant send out all notification to the Sentinel and all interested parties, I will do everything in-house. It saves me the hassle of calling, and do you have this, and try to track down our information to have these meetings. So the cost will go up to $250, and I'll do all paperwork in-house. Thought it for our fees. We are adding EV charging stations. I know you all saw one go uptown here by the, what used to be a big R. So we're adding Level 1 and 2 as permitted uses in all districts. Those are your, like, your home use, EV charging, something of that nature. They're a slower charging unit. Level 3 is permitted in highway commercial and general commercial, and is special exception in all other districts. And then, a couple just maintenance things we had to do in the highway commercial district. Many storage and warehouses were permitted and special exception. They were moved out of special exception and just to permitted use now. In the IR district, landscaping is no longer required around the airport. They're not allowed to have landscaping, so instead of them coming in for variance every time, they are no longer required to have landscaping at the airport. Retention ponds here in town, we got a couple of them that are under need of maintenance that is now added into the ordinance to maintain those retention ponds. If they are not, then we can treat them as any other violation, and they'll start getting letters, and somebody will have to maintain that. We had a training session with KK Gearhart Fritz, and she pointed out some, again, just general maintenance corrections that needed done in the ordinance. We made those corrections. Solar requirements, we have changed medium and large roof mount only to require TRC, and no longer is required as a special exception. Because when they do a roof mount solar, they are required to give us a structural engineer report that that building can withstand the weight of those solar panels. So all that's already in there. And they're not taking up any more land on, any more space on the ground. So it's just required a TRC now, so the different departments can go over and make sure that it's okay for that area. We're changing in Article 5, 7.1, that it says no accessory structure allowed without a primary structure. That has been removed, and it has been changed to accessory structures must relate to the primary structure and its uses. Kiwanah asked us to require that all fences require a location improvement permit and have to sit two feet off the property line, whereas before they did not require any permits, because Kiwanah did not take on our building codes. So now they've asked us to add that in there. So in, let me see here. For the subdivision ordinance, all new residential developments of four lots or more must be within walking distance of a park, recreation area, or open space. That is part of our comp plan, so we added that language in there. So with four or more lots, shall offer open space within 10 minutes or walking distance of a park, open area, some kind of open space for them to have. Some zone map amendments here in town. Liberty Baptist Church, right now is suburban residential, so it doesn't really make sense for them. We're changing them to IR, which is just more conducive to what they need over there. In Fulton, where the new Dollar General is going in, that area in there, we're changing from suburban residential to downtown commercial. It does not change any of the uses over there. Again, it just makes it a little bit easier for that store there to be able to do what they need to do over there. And then here in town, over on 9th Street, so there are several lots over there, right by the train tracks there. They are, the green area is not changing their zoning. They chose not to, but from Jason Hudkins, where he owns that building there, that area all in there is going to get changed from IN to general commercial, because it's not intensive use over there really, or industrial over there. So we're changing it to general commercial, again, to be more conducive to what the needs are in that area. I believe that's it. Do you have any questions?
Questions? Anyone who would want to comment? Entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. All right, everyone get Mayor Denton's Apache Drive update.
He didn't send, oh, he sent one?
Yeah, he sent one. Is it today?
Yep.
We are on schedule. These things are moving along. Any questions? Okay. Ordinance, ordinance 7-2023, ordinance 8-2023, we cannot pass tonight, but we can do the first and second reading, so that in the meeting, we only have to do the final reading on that. And these are pertaining to what Eric was talking about from Baker Tilly. So I want to entertain a motion for the first reading of ordinance 7-2023.
So move by title only?
Thank you. Then move?
Second.
Thank you. All right, move in second, I'll read the first reading by title only, all in favor? All right, ordinance number 7-2023, amendment to water tap fee ordinance. All right. Entertain a motion for the second reading of ordinance number 7-2023.
So move by title only? Second.
Move in second, all in favor? All right, ordinance number 07-2023, amendment to the water tap fee ordinance. I refer to the second, we'll do the same thing on ordinance 8-2023, and for the sewer rates, entertain a motion for the first reading of ordinance number 8-2023, by title only?
So move. Second.
All right, move in second, all in favor? Ordinance number 8-2023, sewage rate ordinance, and ordinance amending ordinance number 02-2021, fixing the schedule of rates and charges to be collected by the City of Rochester, Indiana, from the owners of property served by the Sewage Works of said city and other matters connected therewith. Entertain a motion for the second reading of ordinance 8-2023, by title only?
Second.
Move in second, all in favor? Ordinance number 8-2023, sewage rate ordinance, and ordinance amending ordinance number 02-2021, fixing the schedule of rates and charges to be collected by the City of Rochester, Indiana, from the owners of property served by the Sewage Works of said city and other matters connected therewith. Okay. Onto ordinance 9-2023, amendment to the purchasing policy. Shana, do you have anything for us on this?
Just that it was recommended, Baker Tilly actually had recommended that we revise, because they haven't been revised since the 70s, 80s, 90s, some of our policy, and also state board accounts. Of course, obviously, we file state board accounts recommendations first and foremost. So these policies actually are just that, they're updating our current purchasing policy, our capital asset policy, and setting the thresholds of state board accounts at elevated levels, and Baker Tilly's.
Okay. Any questions on that? Entertain a motion for the first reading of ordinance 9-2023. Keep in mind, this is seven pages long.
We didn't have, there was only one tonight, that was only a single page of order. Sorry.
I know, I only gave you one page.
Did that attention.
I know.
But if you like all of them.
I have a motion to read by title only? Second? All in favor? All right. Ordinance number 9-2023, amendment to the City of Rochester purchasing policy of my ordinance 22-1998. Any discussion, questions? Entertain a motion for the second reading of ordinance 9-2023.
So move by title only? Second.
Move in second, and all in favor? Ordinance number 9-2023, amendment to the City of Rochester purchasing policy and ordinance 22-1998. Entertain a motion for the third reading of ordinance 9-2023.
Can we do title only on the third reading?
Yeah.
You can do title only on all three if you need to.
Does it hurt anything to wait till the next meeting for this one?
I was going to say, it's, there's not a, I mean, that's just updated against the code, so...
So move by title only? Second.
Move in second, and all in favor? So because it wasn't unanimous, can we do title only?
But you put, did you put, was that a vote for third reading by title only?
Yes.
Okay, but vote for third reading by title only didn't pass, then someone can make a new motion to read it in its entirety, or you can, you can entertain a motion to, well, you've had two readings, it automatically is safe for the next meeting, third reading, and there's no other motion.
Correct.
You want to make that motion, or should we just push it to the next meeting?
Now, I want clarification. The next meeting in its entirety is being moved to the 19th.
To the 19th.
So the one scheduled for the 26th, we're bumping it up to the 19th, the whole meeting. So that means your public hearing on the sewer rates is going to be that same night.
Yes.
So most likely, you're going to have a crowded room.
Yes.
So just keep that in mind as far as the length of time you want to be here.
No, it's until Christmas. Till Christmas. All right. We don't have the 26th to recover.
Well, there you go.
Ordinance number 10-2023, entertain a motion for the first reading.
What is this one, Shana?
This one, basically the same thing. This is the capitalization policy. So this amends currently our capitalization policy, sets everything at $1,000, and at a minimum. So it's bumping it up to five, and then stipulating each of the classifications, because we have different classifications for capital assets. You've got your real property, personal property, so it just actually identifies those more clearly in our policy. A lot of it is for the economic development moving forward. We've got to develop, the city will need to develop a plan, an economic development plan, that hinges on having these policies ready and in place to go. And Mike will need that for some of his, I believe, that's coming up with ready as well.
So move by title only? Second.
Move in second, and all in favor? Ordinance number 10-2023, amendment to the City of Rochester administrative capital asset policy, city code 35.3, and ordinance 17-2002. Any discussion, questions? Entertain a motion for the second reading by title only?
Second.
All in favor? Ordinance number 10-2023, amendment to the City of Rochester administrative capital asset policy, city code 35.0, and ordinance 17-2002. Entertain a motion for the third and final reading of ordinance 10-2023 by title only?
Second.
All in favor? Should we table us for the next meeting as well? All right. Department reports, Chief Butler.
Again, for the month of October, structure fires, one in the city, one in Richland Township, two in Newcastle Township, mutual aids, one in Henry Township, auto fire alarms, two in the city, two in Rochester Township, calls for smoke, two in the city. Accidents, one in the city, six in Rochester Township, one in Richland Township, two in Newcastle Township. Medical assists, 13 in the city, five in Rochester Township, one in Newcastle Township, three in Richland Township. Lift assists, two in Rochester Township. Gas leaks, one in the city, one in Rochester Township. CO checks, one in the city, one in Newcastle Township. Cancelled calls, two in the city, two in Rochester Township, two in Union Township. Ship totaled 55 calls, and we conducted one night of training for drill. Depending on your questions, that concludes my report.
Any questions? Chief, chief shots?
For the month of October, we had 18 accidents. We issued 76 warnings, there were 43 offenses, 21 case reports, 490 calls for service, 25 lockouts, three towed vehicles, and 12 people incarcerated. And you have the crimes, and those people are a lot forced. Jonathan Easter, who is the newest possible officer, we made him a conditional offer. He goes down to Public Safety Medical on Thursday for testing, evaluation, so if everything goes well, I'm hoping beginning of the year is when I'll actually see his first day on the grid. And then I had a citizen, do you want to talk about that?
Mike Gearhart.
I had, Mike Gearhart called me about the possibility of creating an ordinance, basically banning Jake brakes on semis. So he offered to show up and speak to you guys on that, so I'll turn it over to him if you guys are willing to listen to that.
We recently bought a house, Level 13 Main Street, next door to Pizza Place, and we're modeling it. We're going to make an Airbnb out of it. Well, as we're working there all last year or so, and this summer, you would not believe the noise that those guys make when they hit those exhaust brakes. Now, usually exhaust brakes, but I understand, it's usually when you're going down big hills, so it doesn't hurt your brakes. But if you're going 30, 35 mile an hour in town, there's no, you know, incline or anything. But I think a lot of them just do it so that your things rattle. I mean, if you ever get a chance and want to go, just set downtown one day, and you will hear, it's not only there, I think it's on all edges of the town, because when they come in, I live in a little town of Akron, and they've got an ordinance, they've had for years. Silver Lake's got one, an ordinance. So it's nothing new, it's just something, well, I talked to Shana, he goes, nobody's ever complained about it. Well, maybe they're just used to it, or maybe they're in a hope, and they're, you know, windows are all up, and they don't hear it, but it really, really shakes around and rolls. So with our Airbnb, it'd be nice that when people come to stay, they can get a good night's rest, or, you know, enjoy the day there, stay, without having that kind of noise. My wife is out at the beauty shop at Cross from Chico the other day, and a gal says, "Why is those guys making so much noise?" I mean, well, their things are stable on their brakes, so they use their exhaust retarder. I think Tom's got exhaust tars on his fire truck.
They do, they're not that loud.
But they're nothing like the Jake brake. The Jake brake is just, I think it opens up something, closes the valves, and let all the exhaust... The Jake brake is just, think it opens up something, closes the valves, and let all the exhaust go out through the. But it'd be nice if you looked at the ordinance, and maybe get some more information from the public. Something to look at.
I can get a copy of Akron's, if you want.
You would please, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Any questions? Thanks, I can.
So I did, I did hear from Dwayne. 90% of the main town, the leaves is picked up, and they'll be back to the east side of the lake tomorrow to finish up. So the change that we've made to the ordinance seems to, there's no adverse effects that I know of right now. We won't know dollars-wise till we finish the season and see what the impact is. That's what we're just kind of waiting to look at. But so far, it was really, there was an incident with one of the piece of equipment. They were pulling leaves up, and it sucked up the paver stone and damaged the impeller. So he had to deal with that. And I think he'll be here, one of our meetings, to explain this to us.
Sucked up the paver stone?
Yeah. I'm not sure if it was, someone had bricked the leaves up, and they had them around a tree, and the leaves were up there, and they were pulling, pulled one up, and then, I think it was about $3,000 for that impeller, I think, to replace, so.
Okay. Reports of committees. Eric's not here, David's not here, Bruce's not here, Fedco. Michael, did you have anyone want to share?
Yeah, the housing study is taking second place for a while to Ready 2, which I'll get into in a second. We're in the process of contacting contractors to see if they're interested in taking on projects. We haven't identified any sites yet or anything like that. It's also the holiday season, so things are slow, no problem with that. Moving on to Ready 2. There's a meeting tomorrow in Kokomo. We're meeting every two weeks down there and identifying projects and such. We've gone from 60 projects down to 30, and now, the six county regions wide, we're down to 20 projects. Rochester and Fulton County, we have thrown out eight projects and collapsed them down to four, realizing that four of them could fit into a bigger one. The first thing that we're gonna shoot for is an industrial park. We've been working on that quite some time, and this is the time to go for something. It would be only for infrastructure, it won't be for buildings or anything at this point. Another project, and this is not in order of preference or anything, is the hospital has requested a mobile clinic for Kiwanah and Fulton, which would visit both cities two times a week. And we felt that that was important. The reason I'm saying that is, Ready 2 is more for regional projects than for a specific city or county project at this point. So we want to impact not only the region, and we felt that that particular project, if they go into the smaller towns, and people from surrounding counties, gives them a chance where maybe that will be closer than going to a hospital in their own county or something like that. Let's see, so there's the industrial park, there's, oh, there's a learning center, career center type of project that the school system wants, and since childcare really is very, very critical, and it's growing more and more difficult every day, really, we felt that that was an important project. And the fourth one that we're gonna shoot for is a really, I'll call it massive downtown improvement process, where I ask for money to fix facades, buildings in any way that need it, roofs, walls coming down, things like that. And at this point, I have 16 buildings that are being involved in that particular project. And so I'll wrap up by saying, I can't give out any names or anything, but I'm working with companies who are interested in coming into Rochester.
Thank you. Any questions? Bobby, you have anything for the park board?
Yes, they met a couple of weeks ago. They did get their golf carts, they've, basically, are doing routine maintenance. They got into a pretty good discussion about the cart paths, wanting to figure out whether to repave those. Pretty expensive project, possibly, that they might be looking into. At the very least, grinding down some of the places where the, where that were teed up, so hopefully doesn't do damage to the carts. They're redoing sponsorship signs. They've got, sounds like kind of a mess with the smaller windows in the pro shop. They had 20, they're rotting out, so they got, as I understand it, so 21 little windows that they're worried about getting that fixed. They're looking into fees for carts. I think they're gonna link the green fees the same next year. Dwayne reported that the parks, that the picket tables and trash cans have been picked up. They had a chance to order, I think, give a decent deal for chemicals and spears for food next year. So I think they went ahead and ordered that. There's also a pretty good discussion about the beach area and the sand there, that desire to freshen that up. I guess that was a 2009 Leadership Academy project at that time, that kind of got that going. And as it turns out, there's a group at Leadership Academy that is interested in trying to help seek permits to the DNR and do a lot of legwork and plans for that park, so more to come. And I think that group's gonna come to their park board meeting this, in December.
Any questions from Bobby? Thank you. Marty, you have anything for?
BZA did not meet in November because of lack of a quorum. They have to meet in December, it's scheduled for the 27th. They're trying to figure out if they're gonna have a quorum on it. There is a petition in front of them that they need to act on this year yet. So there'll be a meeting, but right now, it's scheduled for the 27th. Council on Aging met yesterday, it was relatively short. Meeting trips are substantially up from 2023, in 2023, over 22. They did have a couple drivers out with COVID in November, so they still average over 100 trips a day, even with the lack of drivers. But other than that, any questions? That's the reporter.
Any questions? Thank you. Todd, do you have anything for solid waste or animal adoption center?
Yes, we did have a meeting for animal adoption center. Gave a report on September and October numbers. They adopted out 114 animals in September compared to 98 last year at the same time. And 84 in October compared to 67 last year at the same time. They are, they set their new budget at $348,000, which they think is reasonable to make with the new vaccine clinics that they've been doing. Picking up a lot of funding from that. And they are working to purchase a new van. They will be using to pick up a distributor. So there'll be fundraising for that soon. Solid waste, I was not able to make, so I'll have to work for that.
Questions for Todd on animal adoption center? Brian, do you have any pre-board EMS?
I do not.
Any questions?
Just to go to the meeting in December.
Andy, did you have anything for legal?
Just Resolution 08-2023. The report that Kim gave is for amendments for the solar ordinance, but the way that process works, because it's an intergovernmental thing, you need to pass a resolution to approve that, and before those can take place, because it's both a, both a city and county venture.
Okay. So let's take care of that. Entertain a motion for the reading of Resolution 8-2023. Is that by title only?
By title only.
Thank you. First, they're all in favor? Resolution of the City of Rochester adopt amendments to the Fulton County Zone Ordinance, Subdivision Control Ordinance, and the Zone Map, or Resolution 08-2023. Entertain a motion for the adoption of Resolution 8-2023. Move in second, all in favor? Thank you. Yeah, there's only four. Maybe Marty doesn't get the sign.
Yeah, Marty does, sorry.
Do you have anything for ADA?
I do not have any updates on ADA.
Entertain a motion to adjourn? Move in second, all in favor? Thank you.